Meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals of February 8th, 2022. According to the agenda, I would ask Mr. Nguyen to please deliver the invocation.
Thank you. Let us pray, please. Father, we thank you, Lord, for your blessings on us today. We thank you for your goodness and your love that you bestow on us day by day. And we ask God, as we are involved with this meeting today, we ask that you continue to give us guidance, direction, and wisdom. And once again, thank you, Lord, for giving us your blessings. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Mrs. Waterhouse, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Gambro?
Present.
Ms. Waterhouse?
Present.
Mr. Raschio?
Here.
Mr. Hirschenson?
Here.
Mr. Nguyen?
Here.
Mr. Benson?
Here.
Mr. Galway?
Here.
We have a quorum. There are two items on the agenda, items five and six, which I would like to defer until the end of the public hearings. Public comment will also be deferred until the end of the public hearings.
Yes, at this time, if you're here to speak on the case that's before us now, you will be offered an opportunity to speak during the presentation, actually during the hearing for that item. And so today we have one item, which is a special exception request for the Bonita Diner for outdoor consumption on premises. If you are, this is a quasi-judicial hearing, if you are here to speak in favor or against the project, all testimony will be sworn. So I ask you to raise your right hand now and please swear affirm that you desire to tell truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. The first case is the Bonita Diner special exemption, special request, exception request at 3601 and 3621, Bonita Beach Road, to allow outdoor consumption on premises associated with a restaurant group three use. So we're going to hear from the staff first.
You will hear from the applicant first. I'll just give a brief introduction.
Ah, thank you.
Mary Zizzo for the record. Good morning, everyone. This request is for outdoor consumption on premises of alcohol associated with a restaurant group three, which is a traditional restaurant. This request is required because it is within 500 feet of a place of worship as well as residential dwelling units. I want to make clear that the request is for the outdoor consumption on premises. The restaurant is permitted by right. So we are solely assessing the outdoor consumption. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and board members. I'm Wayne Arnold. I'm a professional planner with Grady Minor and Associates here in town. I'm here representing the Bonita Diner. And with me today, we have Skip Fox, who's with the Smith Organics Restaurant Group. We have Maureen Minker, who's the project architect. I have Jim Banks, who's our traffic engineer, and Michael Herrera from our office, who's the professional engineer. We have been working on this project for some time. And as Mary said, the use itself is permitted by right under your Bonita Beach Road corridor ordinance. We're here because we have outdoor dining, and that outdoor dining, obviously, they wish to serve alcoholic beverages as part of that, as part of the restaurant. So as Mary indicated, we do have residences to our rear, and we have a church across Bonita Beach Road. So we're here because we're within 500 feet of those two uses. The subject property is located on the south side of Bonita Beach Road. It's a little over two acres, and it's located just west of Windsor. And the property is currently vacant today. It's surrounded by commercial to the north, to the west, and to the east. And you can see the residential community located just south off of Macombe Drive. So part of your Bonita Beach Road corridor overlay talks about building structures that are closer to and sort of engaging the street. So what we have done, north is to your right on this image, the building itself is located in this area. So it's located in the extreme northwest portion of the site. And then, of course, site access is from Bonita Beach Road. We'll be installing a right turn lane into the property. And then our parking lot is located to the rear and to the east of the building. The restaurant itself is sort of a unique concept. It features a lot of outdoor seating in a courtyard setting. So there is a Lake Park Diner in downtown Naples that's a sister-type restaurant to this one. So if any of you had a chance to dine there, you'd see that there's an influence of outdoor covered seating and that it's, features organic menu. And it's been a very popular restaurant concept, and they're like to bring that concept to Bonita Springs and elsewhere. So in this particular case, I'm going to walk through a little bit more of the site plan because this is a detail of the seat. I'm not sure what's happening with the, oh, I'm probably on the keyboard. That's probably what's happening. Sorry about that. Can you help me fix that? Thank you. So again, the site plan, let me just point out a couple of things. So the building itself consists of a courtyard, which is internal to the building. It has an extensive wall system around the courtyard as well as hardened enclosed building area that would have indoor and outdoor dining. So the site itself is surrounded, where we have residential, by an eight-foot-high wall and a landscape buffer that's required under your corridor. And then, of course, the restaurant concept, this is sort of an image of the courtyard. So you can see that the kitchen building is a hardened, air-conditioned, enclosed building. We have a courtyard area that features what's called Rensen seating. That's a series of louvered type cover. So you can automatically open the louvers during nice weather. You can close it during some inclement weather to provide a roofed covered area for dining. So Bonita Beach Road is along here. And inside, this is a gated and walled courtyard, again, as I said. And we have some images to show you what this starts to look like. So elevations from Bonita Beach Road, you can see that there's the walled courtyard feature. The image on the lower left shows you, it's not an operable food truck, but it's just a prop for the courtyard concept itself. And then this is an image from parking lot side. You can see, again, that it's entirely enclosed as a courtyard concept. And then this is elevation looking to the east. And this is the closest proximity to a residence that we have. But you can see, again, that it again features walled courtyard area. So all the dining takes place either inside a building or behind a walled courtyard. And we believe that that is appropriate for the distances that we would be from the residences. And we've placed the outdoor dining concept and the consumption on premises as far away from the residences as we can. These are some other images showing you the courtyard where people would be dining. This is the area called Rensen-type seating. You can see it's got a covered area, but that's a louvered area that can be open and closed and for inclement weather use. And then you can see the courtyard features, some seating areas, benches and things like that for people to gather in. But that's, the concept is having this outdoor dining concept. I think we all realize that after COVID, that outdoor dining is a really popular option, and a lot of places, you know, made it possible by right. And they closed off streets in downtown areas so people could have outdoor dining. And this concept was built on the concept of outdoor dining. And we think it's a neat concept. It's one that will work well here in Bonita. And we think we've designed it in a very responsible manner so that it's not disruptive to either the church across the street or the neighbors to our south. We worked with staff in developing several conditions for the special exception, which I'm not sure how many special exceptions you all have seen for consumption on premises. But those typically feature hours of operation limitations and things that staff has in your staff report. And we've agreed with all of those hours of operation limitations. And oftentimes, there's music associated with these. Their concept would be possibly a solo artist occasionally during their, and staff, I think, agrees with that concept, that we're going to be within the noise ordinance, and that's not going to be disruptive to the neighborhood in any way. So again, the concept has been working toward the consumption on premises. And I think that's a little bit misunderstood from the couple of neighborhood meetings that we had because I think people were thinking that this was about the restaurant itself. And it's not really about the restaurant. It's one of the operational characteristics, obviously having alcohol service with your restaurant is an important thing. And we believe we've done that in a very responsible fashion and hope you can support us with staff's recommended conditions. We have our team here can answer any questions you may have. And I'll be happy to try to answer some.
I have just one question. The closest area to residential is enclosed kitchen building. How close?
Michael, can you help me with that number? I'm sure I can't read that. Do we have a dimension on there? I just can't see that from...
Oh, I'm looking at a different, there's no dimensions on it, so I'm sorry.
Mary's indicating that's 260 feet. I've got a hard copy.
260, did you say?
Yes, sir.
Um...
It's about 260 feet, and that is...
And there's going to be a wall, you say, on top of it, too?
That is correct. It's entirely enclosed with a wall system. It's probably about 12 feet high, the courtyard wall.
Okay. I don't know if you're the person to answer this, but you're going to have fans, exhaust fans, on the kitchen, right?
I'm a...
And they're going to make noise. So can you talk a little bit about that?
I can let Mr. Fox try to answer those questions. The restaurant itself, the kitchen area is all enclosed. It's a typical...
I understand, but it's vented to outside.
I see. Okay.
And the, I'm certain that the exhaust fans are on the roof. All right, Mr. Fox?
Yeah, I think you need to come up to the podium.
You're correct, of course, that the kitchen exhausts do exhaust from the roof. But today's technology and everything, they are extremely quiet. If you're at the restaurant, even just came from our restaurant in Naples, and even at 8:00 in the morning, while they're prepping and everything else, you can't hear any exhaust noise whatsoever.
No exhaust noise?
No.
Okay. Well, that allays one of my fears. Thank you.
Can you tell me what, I'm sure you can, what's in Westgate Center?
What is that? Westgate Center is an office complex, and it has multiple tenants. But it is an office building.
And Bonita Executive Suites is the same?
It is. It's a smaller office suite, yes.
So the closest residence is the one north?
It's just southwest.
Southwest, on that one corner.
At Marin Lane, yeah. And I would point out, the commercial zoning designation goes right here.
Yep.
So every, that's, that house sits adjacent to commercially zoned and designated property under your conference of plan.
And that, the closest sitting residence is next to the parking lot?
Yes, yes, it would be. Under your Bonita Beach Road corridor, the parking is really not encouraged to be up front of the street. It's meant to be behind the building so that the street is more pedestrian-friendly. So there's a limitation on the parking arrangement anyway under the overlay.
And the church is across Bonita Beach Road?
Yes, sir. It's located in an existing building. It's been a number of different uses over the years, motorcycle dealer to church to, I think at one time it might have been even a nightclub. I'm not sure, but...
Is the church all those buildings we're looking at, or just that one in the center of the parking lot?
It's the one just in the center.
Excuse me, Wayne, has there been any commentary at all from the church regarding any aspect of the...
We've heard nothing from...
I didn't see anything in the...
I have not received any correspondence from the church.
That's fine. Thank you.
It's across the...
Do you know what's in the building to the west of the church? That, anybody know what that one is? I'm not real familiar with that area.
That's RV park.
That's not that beach t-shirt place, is it?
That's, that's to the east.
See the I N. and Inglacia, that building right there?
Yeah, that's the church.
So the church is more than just the one building?
No.
For the record, Jaclyn Gensen, that used to be Holiday Motorsports. I believe now what's in that building is a concrete paving, our paver company, that they have a showroom in the front portion of the building. I think that's the last use permit I looked at.
That's all I have. Thank you.
How are you handling the drainage from the parking lot?
The, on the site plan, let me go back. All of this area right here is a dry detention system. This is all part of the property, and that's part of the dry detention system that has been, has been designed to accommodate the drainage for the site.
So no water will leave the site?
Water does discharge from the site after it's been pre-treated. It leaves at a certain discharge rate at a prescribed elevation.
Where does that go?
Michael, you want to address that? This is Michael Herrera, professional engineer from our firm, who's already created the design. He's working on the development order.
So a portion of that open space is dry detention, not all of it. But water quality and attenuation is handled on-site, meets all the criteria through South Florida Water Management District as a 10-2 certification. And the water discharges into an existing system that's along US 41. And those applications have been submitted to the district and obtained.
So it discharges to Beetrod first?
I'm sorry. Did I say 41? Bonita Beach Road.
Mr. Nguyen, you had a question?
About the church. I didn't know, you know, but it's all been...
To be sure, the only ingress and egress is from Bonita Beach Road. Am I correct?
That is correct. It's a right-in, right-out access.
And, and you have it all walled in, so the chances of some patrons wandering onto the residential area is practically nil.
I would think, unless you're going to scale an eight-foot-high wall, you're not going to meander into the residences.
Okay. I understand that the change condition is COVID. So that, and people want to. Now, music. But how does COVID affect music? Do you absolutely have to have music?
I think most restaurants have some form of piped-in music, some amplified sound. In this case, they would use small speakers in the courtyard to have ambient background music. They've asked for permission to have a solo artist occasionally, and staff has supported that recommendation.
You're not, can it be limited to that area of outdoor seating that is not adjacent to the residential area? I, look, I read through this thing, and the major complaint for most people was noise. They had references to Sneaky Pete's and all this kind of thing.
Correct, yeah.
And I'm a little concerned that, that, you know, I mean, you don't want to buy yourself aggravation.
Absolutely not. We want the neighbors to be our patrons, for sure.
Yeah. So, I mean, take a look at that. I mean, you know, and also, there's, there was initially something about play areas.
Yes, the initial...
That's gone.
That is gone, yes. The initial submittal that we had had a small stage. It also had an area for outdoor games.
Yeah, that's...
Those were eliminated from the proposal.
Okay. On the issue of music, I, when you say a single artist, which we all know what that is, what happens if somebody decides, well, you know, we've got this wonderful new band, you know, three, four pieces? How is, I mean, is there an agreement, assuming this passes? I'm just kind of curious as to whether or not that would be a permanent, shall we say, requirement? Or, I mean, is the applicant okay with that, to keep it to a single form, a single type artist? I'm just curious about that.
Yes, Mr. Hirschenson, we are. We're comfortable with the one artist. They don't currently have live performance at their Naples restaurant, but they do have amplified sound. In that particular case, that restaurant is immediately adjacent to a single-family home. And I'm not aware of any complaints that they've had. The ambient sound is just something that's conversational, music.
Okay. One other kitchen question.
Sure.
Odors. Kitchen odors.
Yes.
Exhausted. Maybe Mr. Fox can answer that?
Sure. Are you asking me?
I understand about the noise, but you have exhaust fans, and you're going to have odors, whether it's oil. You walk by a McDonald's and, you know, you have odors. So...
Well, I'd welcome you to come to Naples and see the diner there. There's no...
I'm not concerned about Naples, sir. I'm concerned about Bonita Beach Road. What are you doing to abate potential odors?
Sure. So there is significant exhaust systems in the kitchen. And again, the only reason I relate it to Naples is because if you walk through the restaurant there, or even into the kitchen for that matter, unless you're standing right in front of the cooking equipment, you're not going to smell any odors being emitted from the building.
Well, what about the neighbors? Somebody goes up in the air. In the restaurant, of course, because it's filtered, it's directed outside.
Right. Even walking around the restaurant. So it's not, that's never been an issue. We've never had a complaint about it. And if you, if you...
Are there residences next to your Naples facility?
Yes, several.
Within 200 feet?
Yes.
And no complaints?
Zero.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else for me?
Questions?
I see it's a 150-seat restaurant. Is there, is there any restriction on the number of people that can actually jam into this place, should there be some sort of an event?
I'm sure that there will be a fire code restriction. I don't know what that number is, sir, but most places, I mean, we have 150-plus seats, but there are obviously, people may have to wait in line to get a seat, so we have to accommodate those people. But I don't think it's going to be an issue.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay. Any members of the public wish to comment? Please, sir. You have been sworn in?
Yes.
Please, take the podium.
My name's Paul Cartwright. I own the office complex, Westgate Center on Bonita Beach Road. My wife and I built it in 1994. We've, the family's owned that land since 1979. We've been paying taxes on that even before the city became a city.
Excuse me, can you point it out on that, you say Westgate. I see executive suites in Windsor Place.
To the east.
It's a four-building complex right here.
Ah! I got to get my eyeglasses cleaned. Thank you. I'm sorry. Ah, so, okay. And so you, you, okay, all right.
When this, it's a commercial piece of property, and it's been vacant a long time. And what they're doing, I don't have a problem with. It's, I own multiple, multiple commercial industrial properties throughout Lee and Collier County. So, and I built them all. When this came about, I went to the original meeting. I went to the meeting at the fire station, and I listened to them, and I asked a question. Because it is within the setback limits, but if you notice, it's right up against my complex. I think it's 15 feet, they can tell you. And they'll say, oh, that's the legal limit. I agree, it is. The original concept showed a stage right up against my complex and live music. Then we've played with this name, live music, amplified music. And they've also asked, I'm not really aware, I think this is a special exemption, too. We're asking alcohol, but I believe the live music amplified above ambient is a special exemption request, too, from what I can tell. I wrote, I listened to it, and I asked a question. And I said, do y'all currently have live music, so my wife and I can go down and make a fair assessment? Is this going to be good, bad, whatever be the case? They said, no, but we're in for application for live music with the city of Naples. I said, okay. So anyway, I sent a letter to all the council people addressing it, including Mary Zizzo and John Dahmer. And I wrote it back in March 31, 2021. I'm going to read it to you. My name is Paul Cartwright. I'm the owner of Westgate Center, 3630, 35, 3665 Bonita Beach Road. The office complex located directly west of the proposed project. I'm against, I am against having amplified music slant live entertainment on the proposed project. I believe Bonita Beach Diner slant Bonita Diner can legally operate without any special exemption if it was operated inside in a closed building. If this was done inside a building, odds are there would be not any noise that could possibly affect the businesses that would, that are in my complex. However, they wish to have all this outside, and that is why the request for special exemption. If you allow this amplified music slant live entertainment to go on outside, there's a possibility that disrupts the businesses in my complex and possibly could be a financial hardship on me. To resolve the noise problem, I would have to call the sheriff's department. And then based on the noise complaint, the sheriff could decide if it's actually is a problem or not. Why should I put through this possible hardship? At the public hearing on September 21, 2020, at the Bonita Springs Fire Station, I asked them if they would have music going on at their Naples complex, Lake Park Diner, where I could go and listen to the music, to see if it would be a hardship or not. At that time, they represented to tell me, no, they didn't have the amplified music that they were in to get approval with City of Naples. Upon further investigation, I found out that was a false statement. They were denied earlier, months earlier, amplified music at the city council meeting on February 19, 2020, reference petition number 19-L-E-10. Police review on Naples TV, city council meeting, archived dated February 19, 2020, item number 13. Also at that meeting, they were asked about their code violations. They have been cited for increasing their seating without approval. Additionally, numerous city council members were concerned about the parking that were taking place on the road right of way and neighboring parking lots. The reason I bring all this up, on their, on their application with Bonita Springs, they said they would be in charge of volume control. Based on their past history, it doesn't look like they follow rules too well. Additionally, they lied at the Bonita public hearing on the matter, following, knowing full well they had been turned down for the same application they were trying to get with the city of Bonita Springs. You, you have to ask yourself, why were they hiding this matter? I went down to City of Naples to research this matter on March 19, 2021. After talking to city council, I went by the applicant's Naples location.
Mr., I think you've made your point.
I need to get this, sir, I need to get this all on the record.
I understand that. And I'm going to talk to Mr. Arnold and ask him about the allegation that they were turned down.
Oh, okay.
I will ask him that. Remember, this is not Naples. This is Bonita Springs.
I need to finish this so I can have it on the record, please. It's, I'm just about done. I mean, they're giving, they're giving, let me ask you a question. How come they're given all this time? My wife and I are taxpayers. We have a project. This could be financially hardship, and I can't finish reading this statement?
That's not the point.
Just stick to the point.
It is the point. I am reading it. Finish.
All right. Let's, let's...
Isn't it in the record, Derek? It's been submitted as part of the...
He indicated he sent it in a communication to Mary Zizzo.
I mean, we've all read it.
It's all there. It's all in the record.
I'm going to finish. Thank you.
My recommendation, Mr. Raschio, is after he's completed, I think probably would bring staff up and let the staff go through their presentation because they may be able to answer some of these questions.
I do want to talk to Mr. Arnold when he's finished.
Even wa, even watching the council meeting on February 2020, the council members also expressed how well the restaurant was doing. On Lake Park Diner's Facebook, they show where they have received numerous awards every year. And also, it shows where they did an expansion, and they think could be ready October 2020. All this is done without amplified or live music. They're so successful that they're planning of doing it again in Bonita Springs. As it's currently zoned, Westgate Center's tenants can operate 24 hours a day. There are no time restrictions to the hours my tenants can work. If you allow the special exemption on amplified live entertainment, the city will have to prove now or in the future why they granted it to a business... why they granted it to a business that has already proven they do not need the music to be successful, and at the same time possibly harming my complex and nearby residents. Please remember, it is not only the job of city council and city employees to bring new businesses, but also, more importantly, to protect the current and longstanding taxpayer businesses and residents that have been in the city for many years. If the city allows this, it will be quicker and easier for me to seek immediate litigation on this matter that deal with possible noise and financial loss for many years to come. I believe a court will ask the same questions that I've asked, and I believe the city will not be able to come up with a reasonable answer on why they approve this. I urge the city council to deny the special exemption for amplified music slant live entertainment. While you have Mr. Dahmer up here, you might want to ask him the history when they approved something on another one, beside one of my other projects. They went something, go in, and the problems that I went through for over a year, I ended up winning the case. Rick can tell you about it. Mr. Dahmer can tell you about it. And so, when you sit and want to say, oh, this and that, I went through this before on another project. Thank you.
Tell me, wait a minute, don't go away. Tell me your hardship.
Well, when, when you're making it where he's in control of the volume, so when the dentist says, I'm unable to operate my business, or somebody else says the music is loud, because one of you asked, well, it's one person and this and that. When that, and then that tenant says, I can, it's not like I offer anything special, my office complex. They're all up and down Benita Beach Road, forty-one, all over. Wait, I'm answering the question.
One, please.
Well, because they can go anyplace else where there's not music.
That's not the issue. What is your hardship? Please, answer the question.
I just told you.
What, some potential?
Well, I'm just, that's why I told you this. If it, you're gonna have to answer one day if it does become a problem. There, can I finish? Can I please finish one sentence? You're gonna have to prove one day why you approve something when they, their game, their, their business, and it's extremely successful. You're gonna have to prove why, why you allow this.
I have a question for you, sir.
Yes, sir.
I understand what your point is. I used to live in Key West, so I know what it's like to live close by. That's the nature of the beast. But with respect to a potential problem, you can also, as a owner of the property next door, if it affects one of those businesses, can't they seek relief? By that, I mean contacting the authorities, and if there is determined that there is a violation, are you smiling? I'm being very serious, sir. And if there is a violation, I guarantee you, things will happen. Am I right or wrong?
No, you're wrong.
I am, okay, thank you.
Sir, yeah, I'm, I'm just gonna point, I just wanna point something, sir.
You can bring Mr.-
Sir, let me point something out. Public comment is four minutes.
That's it?
We've been going on nine minutes. I'm just saying that they're, they're asking you questions, and the fact that there's some kind of debate about whether it's appropriate. I'm just pointing out that they've given you quite a bit of time.
I understand they have, and I'm gonna ask you. I spent tens of thousands of dollars. They allowed a recycle facility. You can pull the history up on it. They allowed a recycle facility, unlicensed, to go in behind my property. I spent tens of thousand dollars of legal fees. One year later, I finally got it resolved. I went through code enforcement. I went through everybody. Ask him if that's not true or not. So yes, I, there are ramifications, but you're gonna have to go. If there is a problem, you're gonna have to say, well, why did we do it in the first place? Because they really need it.
Why do you anticipate that they will violate the noise ordinance? That's your whole point. Why do you anticipate that?
Don't know whether they will, but what happens, what happens when they do?
That's, that's, that's for us to decide. That's for the noise enforcement authorities to enforce it. You cannot anticipate a violation. I'm sorry, you can't. And no court will allow you to do that. Trust me.
Okay, so, I trust you. So, so, let me ask you a question. They're gonna also ask you, why did you give it to a special exemption in the first place?
There's no special exemption for music. It's only for consumption of alcohol. Please.
Ask them.
Get your facts straight.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask Derek a quick question.
Yes.
The noise ordinance. If I remember correctly, it's, decibels are lowered between ten PM and seven AM.
There's a, there's a-
If you educate me some more on the noise ordinance.
There is a, there is a decibel standard measured from a property line. So whether it's-
So standing on, sorry, Mr. Paul's back property line, the sheriff's department pulls out a decibel meter and-
Correct, but whether, whether it is music, exhaust fans, cars in the parking lot.
Recycle facilities.
Any, any issues, whether it's in his, the gentleman's project, the Westgate Center, or it's in this property, the standard is the same. So, yes, it's an enforcement issue. But again, I just want, I wanna point out-
If Paul suspects that it's too loud and is causing a problem with his businesses, he would call the sheriff's department. They would come out with some kind of decibel reader.
All right, well, the sheriff's, yeah, the sheriff's department generally has the decibel readers to do the noise enforcement. If it continues to be an issue, then it would be something to raise to the city's concern, but-
We've got an ordinance that covers that.
Correct. So I wanna be, I wanna be clear about the relevancy issues of the testimony, okay? So, the chairman, the chairman, chairman's correct. You can't anticipate that a, that a use will violate the regulations. You can, however, because of compatibility, raise the concern, and it is a criteria for you to consider whether there will be noise or other effects that will be an issue for the neighbors. I would not use the relevance of applications in another community or recycling center or other things to render any judgment on this facility and this user.
Thank you.
I just got-
It's the win?
Yeah, I was just wondering, what was the hours of operation for his, his, like you talk about a dentist and everything, versus music? You know, when's the music gonna be playing? I mean-
I don't, there is no limitation on the hours of my operations. So, so you're making, well, you don't have a dentist.
Sir, let, let, can we take a timeout? The meeting's kinda getting out of control. My recommendation would be have staff give a present, give their presentation in case they answer any questions for either the board-
Please.
Or any other, because there are other members of the public who also want to speak, and then open it up to questions after the remainder of the public-
Ask them answered.
Okay, Mary Zizo, for the record again, hello. I will skip through all the locational areas. We are aware that we are here because of the five hundred feet proximity to the place of worship and the residential dwelling units, and therefore, a special exception is required for the consumption on premises. So, as indicated by the applicant, the entire project is oriented and pushed towards Benita Beach Road pursuant to the intent of the Benita Beach Road corridor overlay. This property is located within the commercial zone of the Benita Beach Road overlay. And it is also future land use general commercial. So the restaurant structure is set back two hundred and sixty feet from the rear property line, and then sixteen feet from the west property line, the minimum is fifteen. Any areas surround a budding residential are provided with an eight-foot high wall and a fifteen-foot landscape buffer. As shown on the site plan, the bar area is completely covered. All the outdoor seating areas are oriented towards Benita Beach Road. The rentson seating can be covered on top, and that is located within. So the closest area to the residential is the enclosed kitchen building. And we're already familiar with what's around there. So as mentioned previously, the restaurant use is permitted by right. It complies with the zoning and the future land use. The site permit has already been approved for this concept. They are not allowed to serve alcohol unless the special exception is granted for the outdoor area. The applicant has provided buffering in the form of fences, walls, and vegetation. That eight-foot wall will be highly landscaped. We've limited the hours of operation. Where the latest hours are ten o'clock on the weekends, and the outdoor music is highly limited. I want to make clear that the outdoor music is permitted within the noise ordinance. We tend to condition it with these consumption on premises requests to make sure that they comply and are compatible with the surrounding areas. So, in your packet, you do have many public comments received. If you look at the date, many of them were received when the application was first submitted, when the stage was still on the site plan, and when the outdoor game areas were on the site plan. Since then, the applicant has worked diligently with us and to comply with what the neighbors have requested, and has removed the outdoor stage and the games. So after sufficiency, when we, and after the second neighborhood meeting, we received responses of support and opposition, which are included in your packet. About four responses were received, and those concerns included traffic, noise, and the proximity to the residences. The traffic was approved and analyzed under the development order. They are putting in a right turn lane into the property, and staff does not find that to be a concern at this time for this specific request. The noise has been thoroughly addressed. The site plan has been condensed tremendously. The conditions are very specific as to what the applicant can and cannot do. And again, the noise ordinance will always take precedent, so that takes effect no matter what. And then the proximity to residential, the applicant has made sure that their site plan is oriented towards Benita Beach Road to try to keep as much distance as possible from the nearby residences. With commercial to the west and the east, the applicant will still be bound by that noise ordinance, and many commercial properties have other commercial properties next to them. Of significance for this particular property, it is part of a planned development that previously had a hotel approved for the site. So this is a change of use, but we find this request to be very appropriate at this specific location based on the conditions and what the applicant has presented. So hopefully, you did have a chance to take a look at the conditions, but we gave specific hours of operation and consumption on premises, and that is only allowed for a restaurant. So if the use changes, it would require approvals again. And then the live entertainment is limited to a soloist only. Yes, speakers are allowed, as with any use outside, but again, we limited those hours for the live entertainment. So to make sure that the entertainment ends fifteen minutes before closing on each day, the latest being nine forty-five on Fridays and Saturdays. And then we also made sure that the kitchen will stay open at all times to make sure it doesn't turn into a bar, keep the restaurant concept continuing. Do you have any questions for me at this time, or I can bring it back to the applicant?
I got a quick one. Would you back up to site plan? Had the yellow and green and blue, or there you go, right there, perfect. So the bar area is outdoors, but it's got a permanent cover over it as opposed to rentson seating?
Correct.
What, what are the double dashed lines at the edge of the bar area? The green is almost covering it up.
The applicant is indicating those are seats. You had a great conceptual picture, Wayne, if I could maybe pull that one up.
It's a sidewalk, maybe?
So the top left is the bar, right? Okay. So the top left picture here is the bar to show that it's surrounded by walls and then covered on top. So it's not entirely enclosed, but there are walls around it.
All right, hang on, don't go away. So that's looking from the, oh, shoot. So in this picture, the upper right-hand corner picture, I'm seeing sliding glass like hurricane doors.
So we're looking at the left-hand picture. In the right side-
Or is the upper left-hand corner, those sliding doors that I see that are open, is that indoor seating? I meant, north, north.
The applicant indicates it is.
Okay. So the outdoor bar is to the far right in that right-hand picture, upper right-hand picture. And it is just entirely open.
It is covered on top and has walls around it.
Okay, I got it. I'm oriented now. So my next question is for somebody else, so thank you.
Mr. Arnold, I, it may not be relevant, but I think the board would like to know why the city of Naples turned down your request for music?
I don't know the reason for that. I was not involved in-
Anyone here involved? Mr. Fox?
Mr. Fox was not involved at that time. I would point out that Adam Smith, who founded this concept, passed away during this approval process. So Mr. Fox stepped in as a restaurant operator to take over.
So you don't know why?
We do not know, sorry.
So when this single artist is playing, where are they going to be?
Do we know yet, Skip? We have not determined the location.
Yeah.
As was mentioned, we've never had a live entertainer, soloist, or anything else at Lake Park. So, you know, whether that actually happened or not, it's-
So let's stick there, Mr. Arnold. Mr. Fox?
What Mr. Fox was indicating is that the exact location for the solo artist hasn't been determined yet. They don't have a soloist in Naples. I think if there's concern where it could be located, then I think we could certainly make commitment that it could be located closer to Benita Beach Road, if that's the preference.
But Mr. Fox, you're envisioning a solo artist with amplified music somewhere in this detailed conceptual dining slide that we're seeing. It's not out in the parking lot.
No, absolutely not. It would be for the benefit of the guests that are dining there.
Or ambient music, well, music while they're dining.
Exactly.
Not intended to be a concert.
Absolutely not.
Correct.
An event upon itself.
Absolutely not.
No, and I think that was staff's concern in our original concept, that this could become more of a bar than a restaurant. And I think as Mary's indicated, she didn't go over in detail her conditions, but associated with that live entertainment, there are restrictions that limit that to the hours of eight forty-five PM on a weeknight, for instance, which is, I don't think significantly late. It doesn't even mean that Skip may do it. It may be very seasonal anyway for that type of artist to be playing. And then, of course, on the weekends, Sunday, it's between brunch hours and three PM. So again, very limited on the hours. And if it needs to be further limited, that that has to take place in the courtyard, then I think that's an appropriate modification to the condition that I'm sure staff wouldn't object to.
Mr. Arnold, you do agree with the conditions imposed by the staff?
We do.
In that case, I would like to call for, sorry, Mr.-
There may be additional public comment.
More public comment?
There were other people who swore.
Anybody else?
Is there any other members of the public who wish to speak on this item? Okay.
Okay, then I think I would call for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the special exemption, special exception for the Benita Diner, consumption of premise, on premises, special exceptions, case number SPE-two-zero-dash-seven-five-one-seven-four-dashBOS, subject to the conditions outlined in the staff report.
Second?
Jambrell seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion granted. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that very much.
Now, we have two other items on the agenda. The first one has to, let's take care of some of the housekeeping issues. Mr. Jambrell, you've seen the revised minutes of the-
December fourteen.
You agree with them? They meet your-
Yes, sir.
All right.
One tiny typo. Page three, the first two bullets should be one bullet. That's it. But yes, I reviewed the video and this is now-
Can I have a motion, please, to approve the minutes of the December fourteen, two thousand and one meeting?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Next item is the approval of the minutes of the meeting held on January eleventh, two thousand twenty-two. I will entertain a motion to approve those minutes. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Last item.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, who was, who made that motion?
What's that?
And who seconded?
I second. Last item. Apparently, the, the land, the regulations, the code, whatever, requires that the chairman and the vice chairman of the zoning board be approved annually. Apparently, I have been approved. Apparently, I have been approved, and now it is up to the board to approve the appointment of a vice chairman. And I would make a motion that the board approve Mr. Hirschen as the vice chairman of the board. All in, anybody second that?
I'll second it.
Anybody in favor? All in favor?
Don't I have a chance to say something about myself? I promise no, no, I promise no live music.
You wouldn't, you wouldn't join any club that would have you as a member. Seriously. All in favor of appointment of Mr. Dr. Hirschen as vice chairman?
Aye.
All in favor? Congratulations. Then I will call this fairly contentious meeting to order, to adjournment.
General public comment.
Uh-oh. I can't get away. What's up, Mr. Rooney?
Is there any general public comment? You moved that item to the end.
We, we asked that already, did we not?
This is for items other than the hearing. Okay, don't worry about it.
What, no, no, seriously, no, 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 really, what, you mean something totally irrelevant that has nothing to do with the hearing?
Sure.
Watch a city council meeting sometime.
Okay. Anybody gonna tell me it's gonna rain today, or what? Okay, meeting is adjourned.